There's not a whole lot. Do you want to do them? I can do them. Library events. Let's see, we have a Red Cross blood drive on Thursday, January 30th from 1:00 to 6:00 P.M. There will be a blood drive at the library. You can call 1-800-RED-CROSS to schedule an appointment or sign up online at www.redcrossblood.org/give. Senior Center, the Senior Center is looking for kitchen volunteer help on Fridays for the COA Cafe, Council on Aging Cafe, from 8:30 a.m. to 12:00 P.M. If you can volunteer, please call the Senior Center at (508) 947-7224. The Senior Center is also in need of out-of-town medical drivers. Drivers would pick up the senior citizen at their home and drive them to their appointment out of town. There is a mileage reimbursement for anyone that can help out there. And we do have nomination papers for the April 6th, 2020 Annual Town Election that are available at the town clerk's office. The last day to obtain papers is February 13th, and the deadline to return them is February 18th, 2020. Does anyone have any public input? This would be the chance to come and speak to the board on anything you might like. No one? Okay. We're gonna move right along to Town Administrator Maureen Candido's report.
Thank you. So first up on the agenda, we've got some more grant announcements to make. We will be getting half of $166,000 grant between us and Freetown, split down the middle, to go towards the digitalization and records retention of our town records. So this is the first in what will hopefully be a great and lasting relationship with us and Freetown or other towns, where we go after grants and have a greater likelihood of obtaining them by partnering up with another town. So very excited. We'll be able to get on board with making less records in the future to be stored in the town and having greater access for people outside of the town hall. So they'll be able to access records as complete documents. It's pretty exciting. Number two, our department heads are submitting their preliminary budgets this week and capital plans next week. So we're moving right along with the budget process. Number three, we had a staff meeting of department heads this week, and we reiterated a bunch of good information about fuel usage and energy monitoring in the town. It's something that we're connected to with the Green Energies and Grant, and we're trying to make sure that we're making strides every year in decreasing the amount of energy we expend in the town hall and town offices. We also had the Viewpoint software presented to the other department heads to move towards consolidating administrative software and permitting to get more effective online payment and permitting and records keeping going in the future. So that is...
That's it? That's a lot. That's a lot. So at 7:00 P.M., we're going to be meeting with the town moderator to discuss Capital Expenditures Committee. So until then, let's see what we can make our way through. Let's do Agenda Item Number 7. Let's discuss Spring Special Town Meeting and/or scheduling of an annual town meeting. So we did not have a fall town meeting. So we're just... Either selectmen want to speak on behalf of whether we feel as though or the town administrator need to schedule a spring town meeting before the annual. Maureen?
I can speak to that. Reached out to some of the boards to see if any of their issues that were going before the town needed to be done quicker than our annual town meeting, and no one was in favor of it. We're unanimous in saying we can wait till the annual date in May or June.
Okay, and that was, you said, boards or...?
Boards and departments. I don't think we had any departments. It was mostly boards that had brought things forward. But they were all for it, and so the planning board is going to have to reschedule two hearings.
Anyways?
Anyways, because we wouldn't have made the threshold.
Okay. So then I guess we have a question of setting the date for the annual town meeting, which should traditionally be in May, but we have had a conflict where our town clerk is not going to be available this year. So I almost think we should just go into... Try to do the beginning of June, but I'll open it up for discussion with my board members, see if anyone has anything to offer there.
I certainly don't think we should do a substitute for the town clerk. It's certainly an important annual thing for her to do. She has the experience. So unless there's something air-shattering, I'd rather make sure that both her and town council, and obviously the place is available. But I think she's certainly key to being in attendance. A lot of record keeping goes on.
Yeah, I agree. The alternate would be to vote in someone from the audience to do that job. And I think our town clerk, Lillian Drain, does a really good job, so...
I don't have a problem moving it. I'd like to see us move it to May 18th instead of the first part of June. And if we have to move the May 18th meeting to June, we can do that at a related date. I think we ought to try to schedule it for May 18th.
I think that's still...
And town clerk is available.
Is... I have her days.
I believe she's gone for 10 days.
Yeah, I think she's gone through May 15th. So again, I don't know how much work is involved in getting... In her getting ready for town meeting.
I know she had said her preference would be June 1st.
Okay. Because the following Monday is Memorial Day, right?
Correct.
So we have the 18th. Well... I know, Rich, you'd like to stay with the May because that's what's in the bylaws, but I'm not so sure that would give Lillian enough time to actually get ready. So are you totally opposed to the first?
Not totally opposed, you know, but I still think May 18th's an okay date. But I just think that we continue to push that out, and we've had problems in the past getting quarms in the month of June. And I just... We're trying to put schedules together here.
Yeah, no, I...
You know? You know, to meet some of these schedules, I do think that, you know, we shouldn't push it out, but if that's what the board wants to do, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I understand, you know, with all the scheduling, plus we should try to adhere to, you know, what's in the sort of rulebook. But I think if she... I don't know, you know, whatever, but that's a Friday, so I'm not really sure the amount of work that goes into preparing the actual meeting.
The word is a lot.
Yeah. And I do believe it's a lot. So I think I would feel much more comfortable with the first. So if I'll entertain a motion for... Someone wants to make a motion for the first? If not...
So moved.
Okay, second?
Okay.
If you want a second?
No, it's okay, it's fine.
Okay. You know, going forward, we can make sure to book it a little bit earlier so that way it will be on everyone's calendar, or at least inform folks that we're going to push for...
Yep, and I'll make my part to make sure that everyone knows going forward that we're expecting it to be in May, if at all possible.
Yep. Okay. All those in favor of the annual town meeting being on the first?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is that gonna be at 7:00?
I believe we should make it at 7:00 because the jazz band is usually onstage or something practicing.
Special has to be 6:30.
Yeah, so we'll say 7:00. And that's typically at the high school, but we will get all those details in place. Okay. Let's see. I'm going to skip to... Number 14. Selectman Partley has submitted his letter of resignation effective April 5th, 2020. So I'll entertain a motion to accept that resignation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that brings us to number 8 on the agenda. So we had voted to approve the warrant for the annual election, but with Selectman Partley's resignation, we're amending... We're changing the warrant. So we need a motion to rescind the original one that was voted on on December 9th, and then we'll need one to actually vote in the warrant, which includes his... The remainder of his seat for one year. So I'll entertain a motion to rescind the Board of Selectmen's vote of December 9th to approve the annual town election warrant for April 6th.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the... We... I'll entertain a motion to approve the revised annual town election warrant for April 6th, 2020. Okay, and just in case anyone is wondering, this is what it looks like. There's a one-year moderator term, five-year for one planning board member, one-year unexpired term for one board of assessor, one selectman, the three-year term for one selectman, one board of assessor member, one board of health member, one cemetery commissioner, one finance committee member, two park commissioners, and one library trustee. The board also moves to include the annual town election ballot at the Office of Freetown Lakeville Regional School District. Lakeville, one three-year term, Freetown, two three-year term. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Can I ask that number 13 be taken up so the people that are involved that are here can leave and don't have to wait through the rest of our...
Sure, absolutely. So we... Agenda Item Number 13. We did receive a letter from the Office of Community Consumer Affairs and Business Regulation regarding audits of class to used car dealer licenses. The two places they audited were Shaunick Auto Body and Repair and Dave's Auto. So we were informed that Shaunick Auto was in compliance with the Lemon Law notices, but there was a question about Dave's Auto, so they asked us to look into it. So I would like a motion... Other people here?
Yes.
Yes? I don't know if you want to come and speak to it or...
Sure. I'm just curious about...
Could you come and...
Sure.
Could you come and sit and then just say your name?
Sure. Dave Rose from Dave's Auto, 67 Main Street in Lakeville.
Yep.
We're just curious about the accusation from the state of anything that we weren't doing in compliance with our dealer's license, because this is all new to us. So we're... We'd like to hear what, where, and when. They said we weren't complying.
Okay. I'll read the letter?
Sure.
Okay. It says, "Dear Licensing Authority," which is the Board of Selectmen, "The Office of Consumer Affairs and Business Regulation recently conducted an audit of dealerships throughout the state to assess compliance with Massachusetts law pertaining to Lemon Law stickers. As you are aware, car dealers are required to affix yellow Lemon Law notices on the windows of new vehicles displayed for sale, and in the case of used vehicles displayed for sale, to affix yellow used vehicle warranty law notices on the windows or dashboards. These requirements are set forth in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 90, 7N and 1/2, and 7N and 1/4, and its corresponding Regulation 201 CMR 11. We have included the results of the dealerships which were audited in your municipality. For any dealership that had less than 100% compliance, we ask that you, as the licensing authority, take appropriate action to protect your local consumers and mandate the dealership's compliance with the law." And right in there, they just listed the two dealerships, and it says, "Thank you for your attention," and just a contact person. So it was just my intent to ask the board to authorize a letter to be written to let you...
Okay, are they accusing that we didn't have Lemon Law stickers on there?
That's what they're saying.
What's that?
That's what they're saying.
They are absolutely wrong.
Okay, they're not giving us...
They had a counter on the lot with...
Jim, and the only thing I noticed is that the address they have is 73 Main Street. Maybe they're not familiar...
That's Andrews.
It was the old address. I don't remember.
If it's 73 Main Street, that's another dealer on that road.
Okay, so you're...
67 Main Street. Dave's Auto.
That's Andrews Auto.
Okay, so 73 Main Street is Andrews Auto.
Yes, it is, not our dealership.
Okay. So all I was gonna do anyways is just issue... Ask the board to authorize us to send a letter so we could actually, you know...
We won't waste any more of your time.
Yeah, I'm glad you're...
We just wanted on record that we dispute that. There's never been a counter on a lot with a Lemon Law sticker on it.
Okay. So, well, I guess what we can do is just work with the person here, and we will, you know, ask them if they're gonna want information from you to say that that's not you.
You want to write us a letter, you're welcome to. It's a waste of time and money, but have at it.
Yeah, we'll figure out why they gave you the wrong...
Yeah, why they have the wrong...
There's another dealer on that road.
Yeah, maybe...
Well, I don't know that they... They said it was Dave's Auto, but it isn't Dave Rose's.
No.
I won't say the name. Whoever's at 73 Main Street ought to be here, not Cole Rose.
Well, we heard it was Dave's Auto. That's us, so we're here to defend that.
Yeah, it seems like a simple name change that they got.
Yeah, I think it's...
Shocking me the state messed something up, you know what I'm telling me? Oh, my God.
So the address in question is 73 Main Street. So if that's not you, then...
Yeah, just Madam Chair, I did get out and look at it. We have stickers on all those guys.
Yeah.
But I asked Tracy to call the state and ask them to get a copy of the audit that was done. Of course, they refused to give it to us. They said that we had to put in a public documents request, which is what Tracy's gonna do.
I did, okay.
So we will get a copy of that audit.
Yeah, and if anything comes up?
Yep, we'll let you know.
There's no way of finding it.
Do we have your information? Your... You have his information?
I'm sure she got it.
They're way ahead of the game. So I appreciate you coming in and talking to us.
No problem, thank you. Sorry to waste your time.
Oh, no, no, I'd rather get it cleared up.
Yep.
Thank you.
Time on the clock.
See that? He even noticed that. A different number. They probably picked up the wrong one. They probably went to the wrong end.
I'm going to skip to number 12. Let's see. So we have a request from the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources to designate Lakeville Animal Control Officers. According to Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 151, the Board of Selectmen shall annually designate an animal control officer or officers and must submit those names to the Department of Agricultural Resources. So I would...
I'll make a motion to designate David Freitz, Dossie Lee, Jennifer Nash, Harold Marshall, Lisa Podolski...
Podolski.
Thank you. As animal control officers.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was easy. All right. Skipping to number 18. So we have two safes and two fire safe cabinets in the Board of Selectmen office as surplus equipment. So we need to declare them as such, as surplus. So these were that were... These were in there, leftover from when it was the tax...
Stone Age.
Yes, the Stone Age, the tax collector's office. So unless anyone has any reason to think otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to declare these as surplus.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Discussion, please.
Discussion.
The fire safe file cabinets?
Yep, yep.
The saver tells a lot of time. I don't think it's... They're worth anything. They're so old from looking at the picture.
Yep.
Why don't we just take those and throw them down at the metal pile down at the transfer station?
That sounds good to me.
I don't know, Maureen, just throwing those in the...
Sounds good.
I mean, I... Really, they do look kind of old when you see them in person. Yeah, they're just...
Yep.
You know, whatever.
No combination anymore. No one knows it.
No one knows it. Seven of the drawers don't shut properly either.
Right, okay. So definitely we can... Do we have to make a motion? Or can we just indicate to you that those should go in the metal pile?
We're just best practices because it's under $10,000.
Okay.
But, you know, they have been there a while, and some people think that they should be there forever, but they're affecting the structure of the building at this point.
Yeah, we don't even have the combinations or anything, and the drawers don't work. So I don't know what we do with the other safes, though, the larger ones and the smaller ones.
So we've tried to get some quotes right now for trying to sell them, but it looks like anything we would get would be negated by having to move them because they're very difficult to move. So we would be very happy with a net zero at this point if someone could take them out, because they might have to take them apart to get them out of the building.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I might have to piece them out.
Yeah.
Do we have keys and stuff for those?
We have... We do have combinations for the two safes. So those are good. But the file cabinets, they don't work correctly anymore. But the safes still technically work, but they're so heavy that if you see, there's... We have structure under the structure. There's platforms that they're on, and we can't redo the office and redo the floors with those there.
John, Rich, any thoughts on those?
No. They're listed for sale.
Yeah. See what happens.
Anyone want to come down and see them? We're open for business.
Listen for sale with the agreement that they move them.
We're just worried about people being insured and moving them because...
Right, to move them.
Yeah, because they're... We don't want to see the granite steps get smashed.
Yeah. I don't even know how they ever made it in, but... Okay. So you'll take care of that?
I'll take care of that. Surplus it is.
All those in favor?
All those in favor on our original motion there? Aye. All right. Let me see here. Let me just get a little caught up. What time do we have? We still have six minutes. Agenda item number 20. Review the minutes from the meetings of October 23rd, December 9th, and December 30th. So October 23rd would be myself and John. So I make a motion to accept the minutes of October 23rd. All those in favor? Aye.
Upstaying.
Upstaying. December 9th.
And December 30th.
And December 30th. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from December 9th and December 30th. All those in favor? Okay. We got that done. Five minutes. Okay. Let's give this a try right here. So we have some... For the upcoming meetings. So we're looking at this every-two-week schedule. We have... We already have dated the next meeting, correct? Monday, the 27th?
January 27th.
Okay, so that one's already been decided. So then for the every-two-week schedule after that, it would go February 10th, February 24th, March 9th, March 23rd, and then April 7th, which would be the day after the election. And I kind of figured we'd stop there because we'll potentially have different people on the board.
Madam Chair, I think it was April 6th was the...
April 6th.
On Monday.
That's the day, April 6th of the election.
Yeah, oh, we want to do the day after this, sorry?
Yeah.
I misheard you.
It's correct, that's...
You're right.
So that would be Tuesday, but that would be the day after the election. So...
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on those dates? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Where are we at? Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Let's try to do number 16 really quickly. That is two. At the last meeting, we decided that we should appoint Derek Macedo as temporary emergency healthcare agent. That was at... We did that at December 30th. But because we didn't have it on the agenda as an actual pending vote, we need to ratify that, so that's what we're here to do right now. So I will entertain a motion to appoint Derek Macedo as temporary emergency health agent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What do we got? 6:58. Anyone want a break?
No? Let's keep going. Pick anyone. Who's to say we like minutes? So just keep...
Yep. So we're going to go to number 17. Same thing. We had discussion at the last meeting about the appointments to the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and we made some changes, but again, that wasn't... We need to ratify it right now. So at our meeting on December 30th, the board voted to appoint Maureen Candido and Rita Garbit to Master Plan and to remove Fred Beal from the Master Plan Implementation... Garbit to Master Plan, and to, um, remove Fred Beal from the Master Plan Implementation Committee, um, so as these items were not listed on the agenda, I'm looking to ratify this, so a motion to, looking to, um, motion to appoint Maureen Candido, Rita Garbit, and remove Frederick Beal from the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
So moved, but I think we did sep- separate votes, but I don't have the old yet, because...
You did, separate votes.
Separate votes, okay, so then the first motion will be to, um, appoint Maureen Candido and Rita, Maureen Candido as the Town Administrator, and Rita Garbit as the at-large member, correct?
Yes, you need to do Fred first, because you have to remove him first.
Oh, we have to remove him first, okay, so we will motion, need a motion to remove Frederick Beal as the at-large candidate for Master Plan.
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
Yes.
Question, um, the, not trying to complicate it, but, um, shouldn't we wait to find out who's gonna be appointed to the Finance Committee first? Because if that person is appointed to the Finance Committee, then they can't serve on the Master Implementation Committee.
Correct, the charter doesn't allow for it.
I don't know if you just wanna wait till that happens, and then we can decide.
We'll table this till after that decision has been made. How does that sound?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Okay, seven o'clock, we are going to meet with the Town Moderator, Katie Goodfellow, to, um, discuss the appointment, um, her appointments on the Capital Expenditures Committee. You wanna join us?
Join, join for the points.
And for the record, if you could just say your name.
Catherine Goodfellow, 19 Settlers Drive, Lakeville.
Then you are the Town Moderator.
And I am the Town Moderator.
Yay!
Um, so I submitted a letter of recommendation for two individuals, Kevin Kelleher and Darlene Donnelly. Are there any questions about the submission of these two individuals? This is for the at-large candidates, um, for the two representatives that the moderator is supposed to appoint.
Okay, so the Capital Expenditures Committee is made up of five members, um, one member is the Town Administrator, one member is either one of the Board of Selectmen or their designee, one member is from the Finance Committee, and the Town Moderator gets to appoint two at-large candidates, so this is what Katie is here to do. So we're just gonna work on those two right now.
I make a motion, we appoint Kevin Kelleher and Darlene, uh, Darlene Lee to the Capital Expenditures Committee. Do we, do we know what the term is?
July 30th, 2020.
July 30th, 20, thank you.
So, John, second that, any other discussion on that? John, no? Um, all those in favor of appointing Darlene Donnelly Lee and Kevin Kelleher as the at-large members? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The only thing we have to do now is check with the Town Clerk, uh, because they have to be registered voters of the town in order to serve.
Okay, we'll do that. Alright, so we have a meeting at 7:15 with the Finance Committee, so, um, let's tackle the social media policy, which is agenda item number nine.
I make, I make a motion, we, we approve the social media policy. Second that.
Okay.
Discussion?
Yes, we're discussion, I have...
I'd like to thank the Town Administrator for updating that, so very well done, I appreciate that.
Thank you, and it was a group effort, our department heads had some input in there, I presented it to them a couple months ago, and a lot of them had a couple suggestions that they wanted to see included, so, um, it's a pretty comprehensive document, and much more robust than what we had in the past.
Um, I do have a couple of questions on it, um, so, uh, let me see, regarding, there is a section here regarding, um, the town seal.
Where are you, please?
I believe it's at the bottom of page two. And it says, "No employee or official shall post the town seal on any internet site, i.e. social media network website, blog site, or in any other internet and/or social media communication or posting with intent to give to such site, or posting an official character which it does not possess, or unless authorized in writing in advance by the Town Administrator."
I can speak to that, uh, we had an incident a couple years ago where a brewing company used the seal of the town of Lakeville.
Okay.
Um, and that's what that is representing, it's representing not using the seal as opposed to using it for official business, as in putting it on their own personal.
Okay, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't the Town Clerk the one that can give permission on using the town seal? That's, was my only question.
I can double check on that.
Okay, so, um, I think, I think it is. Um, it, yeah, it says, "Each town shall have a seal established at a town meeting to be kept by the Town Clerk," so I'm not quite sure if that means, you know, I just...
I can clarify the meaning.
Clarify that, yep, and then, again, um, on the page three at the top, where it says, um, "If an employee or official has a question about whether information is appropriately considered public or not, he/she should contact the Lakeville Town Clerk." Um, did we discuss that with the clerk, and her, how she feels about that?
She did not submit any changes to it, and she was given this document, I can ask her again specifically, but, um, I, if she did respond, she only responded that it looks good, so maybe, well, I'll just go over that one line with her to make sure she's good with it.
If we could, because that seems to me like a lot of responsibility right there, and I just wanna be sure that we have, um, the right people.
Sure.
Because this, I, I would rather finish it, get it done, and not have to change it for a while, so, um, so, other than those two changes, John, do you have any changes on those? Um, so I don't know if we should just have you work on those, and then...
If you wanna accept, um, it pending clarification on those two points, or I could just do it for the next meeting.
Yeah, why don't we just do it for the next meeting, that way in case the Town Clerk has anything she wants to say, or if she does, she wants to come to the meeting, or send it in writing, or...
Okay.
So, um, we'll work on that, so we have the motion right now, what do we do with the motion, just table it?
Well, it's been made and seconded.
Yep.
So you need to vote on it, whether or not you wanna, John will withdraw his second, and then, um, a new motion could be made.
I withdraw my motion altogether.
Okay, so we'll do that, and then we'll just do it next meeting.
Sounds good.
Clear that up. Okay. Agenda item number 11, um, so, uh, this is to award Southeastern Regional Services Group DPW Services Award. So, Southeastern Regional Services Group has gone out to bid for DPW Services from 2/1, so February 1st, 2020, to January 31st, 2021, um, the bids that need to be awarded are as follows, so we have Cold In Place Recycling, the winning bid went to Indus Incorporated, SuperPave Hot Mix Asphalt, which is, the winner was PJ Keating Company, Polymer Modified Crack Sealing, Indus Incorporated, Chlorinated Rubber Traffic Line Painting, um, and also Catch Basins Cleanups and Sumps, is, am I reading that correctly?
Chlorinated Rubber Traffic Line Painting is one.
One is Markings Incorporated, and then the next one is Catch Basins Cleaned and Sump Pumps Measured, RJ Gabriel, and then Sidewalk Construction and Setting of Curbs and Edges is LAL Construction, and our Highway Superintendent Franklin Moniz has reviewed the bid results and recommends approval. So, motion to accept, I mean to award these.
So moved. Second.
Any, any discussion?
Yeah, I got two questions, I, I don't know if, Maureen, you can answer this or not, but, um, do you remember what the tonnage was last year for the paving? $82 a ton issued, do you know what it was last year?
I do not know, but Tracy shook out a record of it, I don't know if you can access that, nor if it's in a file.
No, it's in a file.
That's okay, I mean, it's already gone out to bid, I was just curious. The second question is, is that the estimated quantity of, I believe it's 2,500 per ton, okay, um, is that the limit, or can we go above that limit?
I think that's just what the, it is per ton.
No, the estimated quantity that we were going to...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I can?
Yep.
Um, with Serge, we have to provide them with an estimated amount that we're going to use, but we can go above it if we need to, or we can go under it if we need to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, well, let's do number 15. Um, so we have a request from the Building Commissioner to appoint Edward Cullen as the Board of Health Agent. So, the Board of Health is requesting that, um, the Board of Selectmen appoint Edward Cullen as the Board of Health Agent, um, and this would be...
Nate?
Nate?
Yeah, he was gonna...
He was coming?
He was coming.
Okay.
I don't know if he's in the hall.
Yeah.
Send a note.
We're zipping right along there.
I know.
Well, we can wait.
Yeah, I think he wants to be here to...
Okay. I just talked to him, I didn't...
I know he's on his way, if he's not, you know.
He never, he never mentioned that he was gonna be coming. So, I guess we can just...
Do 10 if you want.
What do we have on 10? Alright, we'll go to 10. So, um, agenda item number 10 is, um, Board of Selectmen Appointments and Designations, so, in keeping with the Capital Expenditures Committee, um, so one of the Board of Selectmen here needs to, um, be appointed to that committee, or if we have a designee, but the Town Administrator's already on there, correct?
So, um...
You don't have to appoint the Town Administrator?
No, I didn't, that's, I'm, I think I'm a default for that, so, um, it, I have a note from the Capital Plan, uh, not the Capital Plan, the Master Plan.
Okay.
Um, about, um, it's, both of those are on the Master Plan for the, um, for the Economic Development and the 43D, those are part of the Master Plan, um, I don't know if you, uh, I've just got this. I know, um, so, what it basically states is part of a robust, um, sharing economy, and trying to get, uh, get the town in, in, uh, in compliance with what we're talking about for Master Plan, that we should look to appointing both of those committees, and appointing, uh, new members, there's, um, expired members on both of them, Tracy, there's, it's all expired, correct? For the...
Capital Expenditures was, has not been appointed for a few years.
Well, and that's what we're doing now, but for the...
ADC was appointed, um, last year, so their appointments are good till 2020, July 31st. Project Review Committee was also appointed last year, so they're good until July 31st, 2020.
July 21st.
So the only one that was not appointed was Capital Expenditures.
Okay.
So, um, so that means we're going to appoint one of the Board of Selectmen members to the Capital Expenditures Committee, correct?
Correct.
And that appointment would be good through?
July 31st of 2020.
31st, 2020. Now, what is, um...
43D?
Yeah, so that's all set, though, correct?
Should be, according to Tracy, she says all the records.
If the expediting process for the, if someone put in a permit, if you will, to develop the hospital site beyond what's being done as Form A laws...
Yeah.
Then that committee could, could kick in to help expedite.
To help expedite that.
That's all.
Yeah, I think, didn't we talk about that last time?
So it's kind of a defunct committee unless something happens with the hospital site.
Okay.
On that, though, Madam Chair, um, we don't have a selectman on there, because with Selectman Hollenbeck's resignation, that position is vacant, so we do need a selectman appointed to 43D.
For that one, yeah. Okay, and the same, is the same true, I thought, at the last meeting, I thought we said the Economic Development Committee was similar, that we, it hadn't met, or...
Erin was the chair, and then when he, um, had left the ward, then, um, Selectman Hollenbeck took over, and with her resignation, that position is vacant as well.
Okay, so we need to appoint a selectman to each of those, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, any interest in the Capital Expenditures Committee?
I'll be...
Okay, um, and a motion that we nominate, appoint Rich to be on the Capital Expenditures Committee?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, um, I don't mind doing the other two, um, unless, John, you want one of them?
Nope.
You don't want one of them?
I'm a clinic.
Okay, um, so...
Alright, I'll make a motion to, uh, appoint the, the Econo-, to the Economic Development Committee, and the Project Review Committee for 43D. Second that.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, terms to expire, July 31st, 2020, um, now we also need to, um, designate a point person for the FY21 budget, a point person for the School Department, and a point person for union contract negotiation.
There was an error in the union contract, I erroneously put 24, when it's 23.
23, so the union contract negotiation for FY21 through FY23, so, um...
I've already been designated.
Yeah, we did that.
But it was an executive.
It was an executive session, so, um, I will, uh, nominate Rich LaCamera for the union contract negotiation.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, um, now, when we say School Department, what are we...
It, this is different than the regional...
Regional.
Yeah, this is just for maybe social issues, or, you know, topical, topical issues.
I don't mind, I could take that if, uh, no one else wants it.
Social issue.
Social. I'm social, then you are, Rich.
Okay. I'll make a motion to point her to the School Department, ZA Zone, I guess.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And John, any interest in the budget?
No, because they, no, Rich basically does get capital and needs the way.
Okay, so we'll.
Finance Committee, Regional Finance, so.
Okay.
It's generally that person.
Okay. So I will make a motion to nominate Rich LaCamera to the, as the point person for the FY twenty-one budget.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you got all that, Trace?
Well, my computer decided to stop working, so I'm going old school here.
You're going old school. Okay. Maureen, I'd like to give this back to you.
Thank you.
And it is seven-twenty, so I apologize to the Finance Committee for being five minutes late. So we.
Yeah, we discussed this.
I think we had.
We already have these, right?
Yeah, we have some of the other ones.
Yeah, I'll leave.
I think we already have.
Yeah, I think we.
Yeah, you have ours.
Yeah, okay.
You got a new one? Oh, no, this is a new one.
Yeah.
Oh. Okay. So.
Okay.
All right. So we have. So Finance Committee has their meeting open, yes?
Yes.
There you are. Need my glasses, sorry.
All good. Yeah, we'll move on.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
It's been a bit of a close, right?
All right, welcome.
Hey, thanks. It's great. Nice new space. I haven't seen it. It's new to me.
So there's a vacancy on the Finance Committee?
That's right. So we had a quick discussion. We didn't make a vote or a recommendation. We noticed that at least one of the candidates was here in the room, so we just wanted to kind of get, well, see if there were other candidates in the room before we made a recommendation. So as part of our vetting process, we were just gonna invite them to come up and kind of tell us a little bit about themselves and.
Okay. All right. I don't know who you want to do first, or it's up to you.
Yeah, I mean, so is Brian Day here? Hi, Brian. So, sorry to put you on the spot. So tell us a little bit about yourself.
Say your name first.
Do your thing. So, yeah, tell us a little bit about yourself and kind of your interest in town politics. A couple people mentioned that you had ran for Board of Selectmen, so that's really cool. But tell us, so anything you want us to know.
So, yes, ran for a selectman the last go-around. During that process, a lot of people that said, you know, if this doesn't work out, another area they might want to consider is the Finance Committee. It's another area where you can have a good amount of impact and awareness about the town and have been looking for something to give back or it could, you know, help give out to people what they've done for me the last years of being here. My day-to-day job is one where essentially, we're operating multimillion dollar project where we're constantly determining what resources do we have that we can put onto projects whether they're this quarter, or the next six months, next year and a half. And with the Master Plan coming back and now the Capital Expenditure Committee coming back, it felt like it was a good time to say, hey, there's some other needy stuff that's coming. I think it's a good time to kind of pop in and perhaps, you know, give a interview or set different backgrounds and appeal it in on the committee and see what happens. I will be very honest and say that at the time when I submitted it back in December sixth, I think. I wasn't sure how quick or long the process would be. Back then, my thought was that, you know, when the next election was coming up, Selectman LaCamera had chosen not to re-run. I was thinking of re-running again. I believe he has chosen to pull papers and right now that he also had a second seat that looks to be coming. My intention is to pull papers for that tomorrow.
Okay.
Get his vote on for the ward tonight. So if that alters your thoughts, since, you know, there's only potentially be a few months, I don't know if the board has left, and see what happens to the election, which will be interesting, I think, but just wanted to put that out there.
Well, thank you. Good transparency. So, all right, so any questions for Brian?
Maybe just any public service experience in the past?
So, public service, it's been my ten years in the Commonwealth. So I spent five years working for Massachusetts Veritas Management Agency. Back in, if you just go back to two thousand one, two thousand six-ish, somewhere around there. That where we were constantly dealing with lots of grant money projects.
That's your, your understanding of how public funding works?
Yeah, and then I transitioned from there to what used to be named the Information Technology Division, spent another five years there where it was similar, public funding budgets, working with the grant money, we can't, we can't, I've worked for.
And in terms of availability, just to, you know, what, what's your capacity with doing additional boards and addition to just, you know, the Finance Committee, did you do like subcommittees, stuff like that?
Potentially. So typically speaking, I work in most many area, unless I have to travel to a customer with a conference or such, which typically I don't advance. But generally speaking, I'm quite available, you know, early evenings, weekends, on the whole kinds of ideas.
Town government people don't work on weekends, do they? All right, thank you for that. Appreciate it. Any other questions for Brian?
Brian, are you still working in public service or?
No, still.
Does that explain why you're working?
Yeah, yeah. We used to work on weekends for you, but it was.
All right, thank you. Up next is, it's Joe Fleming or?
Jerry.
Jerry Noble. Jerry here? So, okay, that's all right. We have the letter. And then Joe Fleming. Joe, what's up?
How are you doing? Well, basically, I actually ran against Brian Day and we got the floor, so it's been election and last go-around. He's a great guy. He's got a lot of, I think, good skills to bring to the table, so I definitely should consider him as well. A little bit about myself, I actually served with George on Finance Committee before. I've spent my entire career in finance for the last seventeen years, from budgeting to managing the finance operation on a day-to-day basis. I ran the Treasure Collector for the town of Lakeville as well. Yeah, I mean, I'm a finance guy. I mean, I've seen everything from soup to nuts as far as, you know, I've been in it for seventeen years. I've seen everything, but at the same time, I'm a, I'm a student as well, and I'll say how, because when I was running for the Treasure Collector, I learned a lot about more of the, what goes on in Lakeville on a day-to-day, because numbers are the numbers, but you get to see the qualitative side as well. Same with the Board of Selectmen campaign, again, positive experience for me. But I'm a number guy and I understand numbers, I understand budgeting. With George, I've got exposure to the Lakeville budgeting process and what's in there. At the end of the day, I want to help, you know. I'm very flexible. I'm a financial consultant to the state, where I can, I do consulting with other municipalities. What I'm seeing, the trend is, is we're in heavy budget season, obviously, and a lot of monies are being taken from either a, you know, retained earnings, AKA free cash, or stabilization accounts. And what I'm seeing is that the budgets are getting harder and harder to fund every year. At the end of the day, you know, I'm here to help and I hope that Lakeville considers my offer to help with my expertise. And yeah, I just want to get involved like Mr. Day over here, and it's good to see other people stepping up to the plate and offering, because as you know, it's, it's a lot of work and it can be thankless at times. But I think, you know, I'm here to help and my flexibility is wide open. As I say, I also work as a consultant from home, so I can be available. So, thank you.
Cool.
I guess same question.
Yeah.
Public service experience in terms of, do you have any experience with public finance?
Public, well, well, with the Finance Committee previously, I do auditing, I do general bookkeeping for other municipalities, reconciling cash, working with the other finance managers, or say a chief financial officer for other municipalities, get their books in order so when they come with audit time, everything is balanced and nice and neat. As well as adding any advice to the budget process, just given outside experience and kind of just working with other towns to see how they do, how they do things and say, okay, you know, how can we apply that to Lakeville, so to speak? Yeah, so I still am in it on, on the municipality side, and that kind of comes with being a consultant. You get to see so many different dynamics from the municipality as well as corporate, as well as, you know, private small mom and pop businesses as well. I did do my graduate degree in management. I have a master's degree in management from British Michigan, from Florida State. I'm a local guy, you know, and I just want to continue to, like Brian, give back to the community, and hopefully Lakeville uses my expertise.
So any change given the vacancies with the Board of Selectmen, what are, are you planning on running for that too?
Well, yeah, and again, I'm just kind of like, everything's changing so quickly as far as what positions are being made available to, what is not. I've given it thought. But regardless, I'm here to help on the Finance Committee side, even if I did go for the Board of Selectmen for a one-year or a three-year. But again, I'm a numbers guy, I'm hard, so I'm right at home in finance. So, could I run for BOS? Maybe. But at the end of the day, that my, I hope you take away is that I just want to help out. That's it. Just, just help out.
Yeah. We have, obviously, there's gonna be a vacancy with ours, so this, this position is only gonna be until the next election, which is April.
Yeah.
So we're, we're gonna need someone to fill that spot. So knowing that we have somebody running for Board of Select, or we have, you know, Board of Selectmen vacancies and us. You know, it's, you know, it's important that obviously we get the people that want to do this job. But I do see the value in both people. And not to take away anything from Jerry, just, obviously, it's, he's not here, so it makes it a little, he's a little disadvantaged in that. And there wasn't, other than a letter of just expressing intent, there really wasn't much more than that. So are we looking at just, at this point, Brian and Joe?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. All right, so based on the, the questions, and if we have no other questions for them, what do you guys, any recommendations?
I just have a question.
Sure.
If both candidates consider running for the Board of Selectmen, how did that impact our decision today? Do, does it not matter because of the April?
Yeah, it really doesn't matter. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, I'm, I'm just thinking of what we have left for even meeting. So do we need to fill this vacancy? Technically, no. But, but I do love knowing that there's people that want to be part of it, and to get somebody even a little bit of exposure or experience in it is not a bad thing either. So there's no disadvantage to bring somebody on board as, and, you know, do we need to? Probably not. I mean, I think the four of us could run a quorum, but I think it's, having more people would, would benefit us as well. So what are we thinking?
You want my opinion?
Sure.
Okay, well, I, I think that both candidates obviously have good experience in different, different ways. I like that Joseph provided us his resume, of course, so we could look into his credentials and experience. But I do know that Joseph has served before on the committee, and so if we're talking about giving somebody else an experience, I guess I would vote for Brian.
Okay.
I would as well.
Okay.
Based on experience alone, I would give it to Joe, not knowing your candidate, I'm sure they're both great.
All right.
And again, with that being said, you're not hurting my family.
Yeah.
Again, the takeaway is for me to help where I can. So, I'm okay with that.
This is why we don't have even people on boards.
Yeah.
It's a great example.
Brian is a great guy, and just having the, the experience running with, against him, it was a positive experience. And again, you know, yeah, you can't lose either way.
Yeah. I think, I think I like working with Joe. Obviously, I know Joe. I don't know that Joe's gonna really benefit from having this little bit of experience here. So I think that having Brian on, just to kind of get a little bit of the understanding of Finance Committee, knowing that you're gonna be running and ultimately go there, I can, I can get behind that. Joe, I appreciate you kind of making this easier for us.
Yeah, no problem.
I think long-term, you know, there will be an opening in FinCom, and I hope that you.
Yeah.
I think you've done really well while you were in it, and I think that, that you, we could benefit from having somebody that has the experience going forward as well.
Yeah. And again, to that point, you know, I'm at a point where it's nice to, to build alliances with the people that are actually going through the process of trying to run for office and to, to realign those powers, so instead of working against each other, you start working with each other. So, yeah, I think you'll do a great job and, and don't be surprised if I don't run for, you know, I might run for BOS as well. So at the end of the day, as you know, you just, you just want to get involved enough, so either way, it's, it's all good.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to recommend Brian Day for appointment to FinCom for, until the next election.
Seconded?
Sorry. I was just on a hold.
Seconded by Cassandra. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Well, that's just a recommendation. These guys have to.
So we have a recommendation of Brian Day to. To appoint Brian Day to the Finance Committee, so I will entertain that motion. Anyone?
So moved.
Seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any, any, you folks having discussions?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. No, I don't think. Oh, all right. I'd like to hand out, which, most of you, only George and Joe were on the Finance Committee when the town adopted the Financial Management Policies on September twelfth, two thousand and sixteen. I'd like to just give you four, and Brian and Joe, certainly Brian, because he's the new, the new suggested designate. So I just wanted to make sure that although you were not part of that decision at the time, only George and Joe were on that board. And certainly, at that time, it was a well-functioning group with, with, you know, people making meetings, and hopefully we can stay the course and, and get back on that, and stay on that. But I can't overemphasize the importance of the role the Finance Committee can take if they so choose, that is, be very inquisitive of, of whether it be the public or it be the capital projects, whatever those things that are put in front of you, so that the town might make fewer mistakes or make more informed decisions. You know, there's been things in the past that, that we've done. I'll give you an example of a, of a water tower that we built and we recently sold a couple of years ago to the town of Taunton, thank God. But if, if there were financial policies in place and inquisitive people, perhaps, maybe we wouldn't have voted. When someone comes to you and says, no cost to the taxpayers, and if it sounds too good, it usually is too good. And so I'm hoping that the, be as inquisitive as you need to be, whether it be the capital budgets, whether it be the school budgets, dig in as best you can, and you've done a good job in the past of operating within the budget process. You know, there's not a lot of money floating around. There's a fair number of one-time funds because the economy is booming. So the new houses and the new businesses are funding a lot of things. But if you spend them, the only thing that repeats its life every year is the two-and-a-half percent tax increase. So that the, in your hands, in my mind, is if you operate within the budget, all employees benefit. Because if we hire people in good times, how do you pay for them in bad times? So it's, it's not a pep, pep talk, but there is a financial policy, and I really would appreciate everyone delving into it and trying to stick by it as, as best you can. Because someday there will be a recession, and whatever that is. And if we overhire or add things to the budget that can't repeat, the income can't repeat, the revenue stream can't repeat, we'll be in a world of trouble with tremendous layoffs, which we had in two thousand and ten, maybe. Might have been that last time. So I just wanted to make sure everyone had that, that policy. That's my discussion.
Okay. Thank you, John. I just want. I just want to say that I really like seeing people come forward. You know, we have the best system where we get to govern ourselves, and it's really nice just to have people coming forward, so. Any discussion?
No.
No?
Madam Chair.
Yep.
Could you amend your motion to read for a term to expire April 5th, 2020?
Yes, I amend my motion to read for a term to expire April 5th, 2020. So we have a motion, we have a second amendment, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, do you need to appoint a capital expenditures person, too?
Yes.
Do you need to? And then also Regional FinCom as well?
So Brian had in his letter that he would still join. I didn't train you that, because you said you would do it for us.
Oh, good to know. So, yeah, that's all right. So we made a, we voted on, let's see, so I will be the, on the Expenditures Committee, and Darren will be Regional FinCom.
Okay. Do we need to vote? That's their decisions, correct?
You need to appoint capital expenditures.
Don't they, I thought they appointed...
They appoint one member?
Yes, so that's your appointment, but, so that's going to be you?
Yeah. For expend, yeah, capital expenditures, right.
And then you've also appointed Darren to the Regional FinCom, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So if we can just note that.
Are those both to expire July 20?
Regional FinCom doesn't typically have an expiration date. Capital expenditures would have an expiration date of July 31st, 2020.
I believe those are your appointments to make, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's just informational, so.
Correct.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to...
This Madam Chair.
Yep.
There's a Regional Finance Committee Thursday at 6:30.
So, yeah, so, so he will not be joining. I will go. I know I don't have any, but I will be showing up for it. But understanding that I don't have any voter, I'm just a member of the...
The late notice, I'm not able to make, but I'll be at the...
I understand. Been there.
Okay. So congratulations to Brian.
Yep. Congrats to Brian. Thank you to Joe for...
Thank you, Joe. So we're also...
So we're gonna, if we're good, we're gonna adjourn.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Yep.
All right. Senator seconded our motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's see, guys. Jen, you seconded, right?
Yes.
Oh, Jesus Christ.
Jesus Christ.
Christ, Joe.
Fifteen. Okay. Fifteen. Yeah. So we're on agenda item number fifteen. The request from the Building Commissioner to appoint Edward Cullen as the Board of Health Agent. Want to come on down? And I do apologize, I didn't know you were coming, and I almost sped right through this, so I apologize.
It would have been fine, as long as you made the appointment.
I apologize. We always like seeing you here.
So we got, we have Edward with us tonight.
Okay.
So we did post the position, like the Board of Healthy. We had fifty some odd applicants we interviewed for. Edward here has been doing, in the field of specialty design for over twenty years. He came out number one. We did send the recommendation to the Board of Health to in turn recommend to the Board of Selectmen appointment of Edward Cullen to the Board of Healthy.
Okay. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome. So I will entertain a motion to appoint Edward Cullen as the Board of Health Agent, subject to successful completion of pre-hire requirements. I'm not really sure where we're at in both things, so.
Yep. He just needs the drug testing that's this week. Completed the query and the background checks.
I actually did the physical and drug test this afternoon.
Excellent.
Okay. So.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Edward Cullen to the Board of Health Agent. Is there a term on that, or not?
No.
No term? Okay. I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Any questions? Anybody? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. Welcome.
Congratulations.
Yep.
Tracy Craig McGee. She's the executive assistant to the Board of Health. Welcome.
We have Fabian. Welcome.
John Powell. Did you grow up in Milton? I was on Baptist Street.
I grew up in Quail.
Let's see you. Congratulations. We're incredible. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right. Back to agenda item number seventeen, to ratify the board's previous vote to appoint Maureen Can, oh, sorry. We are going to first remove, motion to remove Frederick, I make a motion that as a select...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There's already motion on the floor.
Oh, okay. To remove Frederick Beal?
I made the motion, and you seconded to remove Frederick Beal.
Okay. All those in favor?
Discussion, please.
Yes.
Has anybody talked to Fred?
I have not yet. I do have a letter drafted for him, but I think Maureen reached out.
We, we reached out. We've had communication in the last couple of weeks.
Personal information.
We have some communication.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, let's see. We're, need to ratify the vote to appoint Maureen Candido as Town Administrator and Rita Garbutt as at-large to the Master Plan Implementation Committee. So we need to ratify that.
So moved. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That's done, too. Any new business? Open up for new business.
I have one item, if no one else has anything. It was a note.
Go ahead.
No, do you have anything?
No, go ahead, Joe.
No. No, go ahead. I got a notice this afternoon from Jeremy Spittle, who is the Legislative Director for Senator Michael Roderick's. We learned a few weeks ago from the Division of Ecological Restoration that they awarded the contract for the APC study to the Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District on behalf of the project team comprising, it's Serpent, Mass Audubon, Horsley-Witten Group, Manomet, and the Nature Conservancy. The proposal was titled "Designing Floodwater Management Program for the Assawamset Pond Complex," and its purpose is to evaluate and prioritize floodwater management actions and conduct feasibility studies to the highest priority actions. Stakeholder engagement will be a central focus of this project. Serpent and partners are working with the Assawamset Pond area communities on municipal vulnerability preparedness, planning, and action grants related to the pond complex, the Nemasket River, and flooding. So D E R felt the team was a great fit for this project. I know it's a big concern with people in town, and I just wanted to make sure that they know that we are looking out and, and we're actively involved in, in trying to get some studies and some floodplain mitigation going.
And that is a big concern for a lot of people, but sometimes it's hard to just say, what are we going to do? So this is now going to be a bunch of professionals looking at the problem, everything from everyone's unique problem, Lakeville's issues, Middleborough, the Heron folks, New Bedford, Taunton, so this is a step in a really good direction. Okay. Any, John, new business?
Nope. Nobody seems to want to talk about it, but I, I think we need to. And what I would like to do is, the Route 79 project got beat pretty badly, and I don't think that the townspeople were aware that we're talking about a $10 million grant here, and the town has already put $320,000 into this project. I would like to set up a meeting outside of this meeting, well, a Selectmen's meeting, but to invite the people from Route 79 and any interested parties to talk about the project and what the project means, because there seemed to be a lot of concern about taking a property and so forth and so on. So these type of grant monies don't come along very often. I mean, this is federal grant money. It's a significant amount of money. So I think we need to discuss it, discuss the, the project, discuss the costs associated with it, and decide if we take a next step forward. But I just think it'd be a shame not to discuss it further to see where we are.
I would be in favor of a meeting time like that. Were you looking for, to have any of the state folks here, or just on a local level?
Well, I would assume that, and I, I don't know all the players that are involved, and maybe Maureen can answer this better than I can, but the engineers, or the engineering firm that developed the design, the design of the project, come in and, you know, give us an overview of the project, what it means and so forth. I would imagine Serpent must be involved.
So I could speak to that if you'd like?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. About two months ago, I met with Mass DOT and Beta. Beta is our engineering firm, and we went to see if we could, in any way, shape, or form, get less of a build-out on the design, because that was one of the complaints, that it was being overbuilt. It's something that the previous board had been, had a little bit of a success at getting rid of one of the sidewalks, if I, if I remember correctly. But I was assured by Mass DOT that they would do nothing less than the project that was proposed. That's minimum design standards, especially with all the engineering that needs to be done. There's, Route 79 originally was a cow path, and it was paved over, so the drainage and the sightlines and all the engineering that needs to be done is pretty significant. And that's why it was identified on the TIF program for an area that they wanted to invest their time and money in, because it's a worthy project. So in talking to them, they are, should be, any day now, I followed up last week, submitting us a letter stating that that is the minimum design standards. And once we do that, we can talk to Beta, and Beta has agreed to come and speak to the town at any point we want, and DOT can also come and attend that for some informational sessions.
Is, is that minimum, does that include the bike lane? That seems to be...
Minimum.
I mean, that's almost like a state standard now. Anytime you see the state working on anything, there's always a bike lane included.
Yep.
You know, and I, I, I know people feel as though it's not necessary. It is necessary, but if that's the standard, then there's not much we can do about that.
And I know there was some communication issues about what the land taking entailed. They were thinking that, you know, that bike lane and, and sidewalk was all going to be land taking, and it was up to forty feet. That's not true. A lot of it is easements and drainage and, you know, over for the, for the, what do you call it, the poles, and all, and all those type of things. So I've asked them to break it down in some much more easy-to-understand language for when they present it, and kind of highlight where the takings are, you know? And people can judge and see, oh, you know, that's only two feet, that's only a foot and a half.
Right.
The biggest problems are going to be around the corners, because the sightlines are really bad. Meaning if anyone has driven off Kingman onto 79, and they can't see what's going on, and they can't see the other way, that's one of the type of engineering things. We also looked at what it would be to repave without the state's help and without using those design standards. And it's almost the same price for us to do it for ourselves without getting the proper drainage and the proper engineering.
Engineering.
Yeah. So it's really a boon for the town to be able to even be considered for a project like this, and it is something that we want to have some education nights on and present to the town in a much better fashion than we did previously.
Probably should be done up at the, up at the high school.
Yeah.
And certainly Beta has offered, obviously, to, to do that, as they were doing that, not only just the stakeholders in 79, but can be the informative meeting of the, of the townspeople also, because they ultimately be revoting on it, if you will, if you bring it, bring it to that.
Does this meeting time have to take place during the week, during work hours? Could they, would they be flexible to do it on a weekend?
Absolutely, absolutely. And they had planned to do it before, but the way the projects go, it's, has to be at 75% design before they present it, so you almost have to get it approved before you see what it is.
Yeah.
In the way they're doing it. But we're asking them to take this extra step and to, you know, help educate everyone in town to make sure that there's no more misconceptions about what the project is and, and what it isn't.
I mean, I've seen a lot of, you know, what people are posting on social media, and, and, you know, we have to at least entertain what a lot of folks are saying on social media. And to me, also, the message I get is that I think people really want information, so I, I think we owe it to the people in town to get them that information, to give them the opportunity to ask questions. So I don't know if, I, I don't want to appoint you to something else, Rich, but I don't know if, who wants to decide. I mean, I, I don't know if Saturday's better, if Sunday's better. There's busy days. People have sports with their kids all day on Saturday in the morning. On Sunday, there's church. I mean, I don't know what's a better time than other, you know, of course, anything we do, I'm sure we could ask Lake Cam to, you know, definitely record it, so that doesn't give people the opportunity to ask a question, unlike if they were there, but they could at least, you know, get the full explanation, if Lake Cam would be interested in doing something like that, so.
Maybe you can go live for the first time, Jose. Do interactive.
Nothing like school.
So I, I just don't know. I don't know what the best time would be. I don't know if the board, you know, wants to throw out...
I think Saturday mornings would be tough.
Yeah, Saturday mornings.
Not that I object to Saturday mornings, but, you know, if you want people to attend. And I, I don't necessarily think we have to have it at the high school. I think that the library can hold 150 people, and I don't think you're going to get any more than that, you know, it'd be a surprise to me if that happened. Well, it's a lot of vote. The vote was, was obviously significant, so, well, it doesn't make any difference to me where you have it, but as long as you have it.
Yeah. Rich, I would have agreed with you before.
Well, I think the other thing that was confusing, and even I was confused in voting at it, that why did we put other projects all together, instead of voting on the Route 79 as a separate line item? You put other paving roads for Freetown and Pickens Street, and there was two others, I can't remember, the two Vaughn Street. So why didn't Route 79 stand on its own, which inflated the, the cost and the cost of the taxpayer? Instead of having the taxpayer able to choose which projects they may, may or may not want, especially Route 79, we're talking about $10 million in grant money here. I mean, that grant money's going to go away very shortly if we don't decide that we're going to do something about it, because they're in the process. I talked to Serpent Saturday at the Master, Master Plan Implementation Committee, and they said they're in the process now of starting a new TIP, which is the funding for these projects, right now. And so we're going to get bumped out and bumped off, and somebody else will love to have that money. So I think we need to get on this as soon as possible.
So I say, football season's over, so there's almost, almost over. So that frees up Sundays. I mean, Saturday mornings, I think, are just way too difficult. Too many people have too many sports with their kids. It's errand day, it's whatever. I don't know if anyone else has a suggestion, what day. I would say...
We could do a Survey Monkey and ask people to come and, and respond. I mean, there's, it's, it's six or one half dozen of the others sometimes.
I would be, you know, willing to do a Saturday at like two o'clock, but I, that's me. I don't know if anyone else feels strongly one way or the other. Anyone from the crowd? Yes?
Why not have two of them, one on Saturday and one on Sunday? That would be up to people.
Yeah. Yeah, the only thing is, we don't know if we could get the engineering people here two days in a row. That would've been my choice, actually.
And we pay for it, each of them.
So, Kater, you're walking out. Don't you have a suggestion? Nothing like putting you on the spot.
Sunday.
Sunday, okay.
I disagree with Sunday.
After church.
Things are bad enough as it is with the kids and everything. Leave Sunday alone.
It's not so much the schedule, but it's the design at a point where they can even overlay the proposal to show the land takings, or are we just calling it?
No, we're very close now. We're at almost seventy-five percent design. Uh, it was sep- almost seventy-five percent design right after the vote, so it was just the timing.
Yeah, it is on their plans.
Yeah.
So they can, they can, they can present it.
Yep.
Um, I'm gonna, I, I, I'm gonna go with, let's try to get this on a Saturday, because that way at least, you know, there's no work the next day for lots of folks. Um, and it's before going out time on Saturday night, but after a lot of the athletic stuff on Saturday, so.
February twenty-ninth?
I, I think you're making a mistake waiting that long.
Yeah, I'd like to do it sooner.
The Serpent told me they're in the process of this, and we're gonna get bumped.
Yeah.
If we don't do something about it.
I'd like to do it sooner.
Okay, well, another option is the eighth, but we probably don't wanna do it in the middle two weeks, 'cause that's school vacation week, and you're gonna run into-
Yeah, people being away.
People being away, so.
Uh, when is vacation?
Vacation week is the seventeenth.
Yeah, but if you do the fifteenth, that's when people leave.
So what's the eighth?
The eighth would, uh, be the second Saturday of February.
Yep. Do you think we could get it together for the eighth?
I will.
I mean, that gives us almost three weeks to, one, at least confirm with them, and then, um, advertise, and, um, we could do, could reduce, not, uh, an RSVP, but a possible maybe, well, that's only like on a social media thing.
I think, I think what we oughta do is just send a postcard to everybody on Route seventy-nine to invite them to this meeting, so they're aware of the meeting. One of the, one of the objections that I found out from a lot of those people, in fact, I talked to some of the people on Saturday, they had no idea what they were voting on.
Yep.
And that, that's a problem. So they expressed the concern to me that, you know, we need to invite these people to the meeting, so they understand what this whole project is all about.
Um, if that's the case, then would you, I, I, I think I would recommend the li- the, um, high school where it would hold a lot more people.
That's up to the board. Board wants to hold at high school.
Can we find out if we have availability at the high school on February eighth?
At two o'clock. We'll reach out to-
Two o'clock?
I will reach out to Beta, DOT, Serpent, everyone.
Yeah, see if we can do that. I really would rather do it sooner than later, and, um, and at least in that way, people can come, and at the very least, if Lake Cam can be there, and people can at least watch, you know, um, watch it. I would love it if we had a really good turnout and folks could actually ask their questions. So we're aiming for the eighth at the high school, roughly around two o'clock, and we will have to, we will confirm that at our next meeting when we hear from all the parties. Okay? All right. Um, old business.
Old business, I just have one item that I had, uh, Lorraine provided to the three of us, the proposals for the paving, drainage, and fixing fields for Ted Williams Camp that Rich brought up at the last meeting.
This is new business or old business?
Old business.
Okay.
Under old business. And so that, uh, so that you have that packet, and what it generally says is that there was a sole proprietorship willing to do the work for each one of those areas for under ten thousand dollars, and we were buying the material, which was about five thousand dollars each. The, uh, park commission, there was some objection raised at the meeting questioning the quoting method, and that it was decided to re-quote that, which you've also been provided those quotes, so that it's gone from approximately twenty to thirty thousand dollars to a low number of two hundred thousand dollars to a high number of four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The park department, and in that timeframe, because the sole proprietor was being somewhat ostracized about how he could do that and why can't another company do it, uh, backed out of the proposal, so that the park department knows who the players are, and they need to recall those people and see if they can convince them to do it for the amount of money that they had originally proposed. So that was what was in front of them, so that it shouldn't necessarily, it needs to be done, it should be done, and it's the park's duty to do it. They know it. I've spoken to the chairman, and they know what they should do. So hopefully they can get on that sooner rather than later, because the floodwaters in the beginning of the soccer season, the beginning, will be beginning. So I just wanted to make sure you had those facts and figures in front of you, which we didn't have the last time.
Okay. Yes.
Um, Jose Invencio, Hill Street, also runs Lake Cam, but speaking as a citizen. Is that bid public information?
It was in their meetings. It was-
Is that, is that information publicly available?
Sure.
To the public to look at?
I would think so.
Is, is that-
I have no idea.
Is it paving?
It was presented at the last-
Is, does it involve paving, or is it just gravel? And does it involve-
Oh, there's, there's a set of, there's a set of design plans that were provided that the town did pay for, that were done by, uh, a, we'll call it a surveying company, if you will, so that the design, which I just put back in the file here, just bear with me a minute. The design of the system, we had done and paid for. We had, I think we had paid, to give you an idea, um, uh, I'm thinking thirty-four hundred dollars for one site, twenty-six hundred for another, so five, six thousand dollars we had done a set of plans.
But I'm asking about the ten thousand dollar bid. Does it include paving, or is it just gravel? That it's, the finish is gonna be just gravel?
It would, let me say, I believe it's just gravel. It's not paving.
It's not.
Paving would be hundreds of thousands of those.
So that has never been-
Right.
Mentioned, and I, I know that.
No.
That's why I'm asking.
So that, but the plans, the suggested plans, which is somewhat of an overdesign, because it's a municipality once again, playing with the hundred-year floodplanes and stuff like that, uh, all that, all those plans are available. That's what was sent out to be quoted by, oh, one, two, three, four, five companies did quote on the plans that were given. So I've gotta only assume it was done at public record, because it was on agendas.
Okay.
Both at the park.
But it would not include paving?
Paving.
No, does not.
So we could wind up back in the same place we were at?
No, no. The design that was done would be proper drainage.
The drainage.
Right.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just a, just a point of clarification.
Yep.
Um, that did not include the, uh, the main parking lot, right, John?
It included the soccer field parking lot between the police station and the soccer fields and the, the karate studio parking lot.
So it didn't include the main parking lot at the, uh, the lodge?
I, I don't think so. That was never brought-
That one's even a bigger problem.
Well, that, that can be sent out, designed, quoted, too, but there's, certainly you have two areas that were, uh, on previous people's agendas. There certainly can be a third item on there, but the two, uh, have already been there. That was what was on everyone's radar prior to.
Okay.
So I'm just making sure that you had that information in the store.
Yeah, I haven't, I can, I can get that information and look at it. I've never seen it, but I will.
Right.
I'll go by the office and take it.
Well, it's, it's in your files. The, Lorraine gave you a copy of the plans and stuff. It's all been there. Yeah.
Today's?
Not, not in today.
Oh, okay.
No, no, you've got it. You got it on January-
I thought it was something different.
No, 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 you got it on, I don't know, January third or sixth or something like that.
Okay. All right. Um, any other old business? Anything? Maureen, anything else? Nope? Okay.
Do you wanna talk a little bit about the budget, Maureen?
Sure.
What discussion's gonna be, please?
Um, sure. Let's talk a little bit about the budget.
We have, um, budgets should be turned in by department heads on the seventeenth, and then capital plans, um, the twenty-fourth. And that will be preliminary budgets that are maintenance budgets.
I know this is kind of a difficult question, but, um, is any, is there a, a, a huge need anywhere on the capital?
Um, the highway department has the biggest increase on the capital, for sure.
Which is typical.
Yeah, they're much bigger than they were in years prior, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any, um, so that's this week, and then the following week?
Will be the capital plans.
Will be the capital.
Yep. And that way to be all clean for the capital expenditures group to look at. Um, and then we need to talk about having budget meetings with the department heads and having it be, um, the department heads, the finance committee, and the BOS all together-
Yep.
-in order to make sure everyone's on the same page at the same time, so I'm sure that'll be easy to coordinate.
Yeah. Um, even if we have to do, you know, um, extra meetings or whatever.
Yeah.
I would really rather everyone just get, have the time to be able to-
Agreed. I think it's the better way to, uh, get everyone on the same page.
Hmm, okay. Um, Rich, do you wanna add anything to that budget conversation? John?
Uh, no.
Okay, John?
No.
All right. So if that is it, and I think it is, I-
What are we doing about the executive minutes?
Um, well, I would, we can take a shot at approving them. And if someone has changes, then we would have to go into executive session to do those changes.
Hmm, I've only ever done them in executive.
You do, I think you do, I don't know, technically you do them in executive, then you, the next meeting, you kind of release them. I don't know why, but that's-
And then you stand on one foot.
I, I don't know why, but that's the way it-
Well, I figured, I figured if everyone's read them, we could approve them. If someone has a change, then we would have to go into executive session, but.
Tracy, any experience in that?
Any experience?
Oh, Rita.
You approve in executive session?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I don't really like going into executive session, but I guess we can, I'll entertain a motion.
You can wait till the next meeting, that's not a problem.
Yeah, we can wait this week.
Then let's just-
My next question is, are all the executive minutes up to date?
I believe these get most of done.
There's one more.
Your last meeting, um?
Yeah, just the last meeting.
Pardon me?
The, the marathon meeting we had.
Yeah.
Those aren't done yet.
Okay, but, so all the executive minutes have been approved-
Prior.
Prior have been approved in executive session?
Yep.
Except for these.
Except for those, and one more set.
And one set.
Okay, so they're all available to be reviewed. Then we have to decide which ones we can release and which ones we can't release.
Yeah. So we, we have that, uh, we have that-
So that needs to be brought to the board.
Well-
Yep. I have mine, I'm doing my homework on that. I made it through, um, half.
Yep. We have, um, twenty sixteen through twenty nineteen, um, that I was giving individually to people, 'cause we don't want lots of copies everywhere for the redacted copies.
Okay, so they're really, they're really not finalized yet?
Not until you vote on them, but-
That's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah. They're not finalized till you vote. They've been approved already?
And they're in the executive session, but they haven't been approved to be released yet, so that's what we have to do. So we do need to plan an executive session meeting. That's probably gonna go probably significantly long to do that, so that one is probably best suited at the end of the meeting than, than at the beginning, unless we wanna start real early.
But the packets are complete.
Okay. I'd like to see that packet, please.
Sure. Wait.
I'm sorry.
Give me a packet of it.
Yeah, I only just bought it two days ago.
Just like the, uh, regular session minutes, okay? I don't wanna see us in this position again going forward. All the executive minutes need to be done, need to be voted, and then you decide whether you're gonna release them or not. But to talk about three years of executive minutes to decide whether some are gonna release and what is gonna be released is unacceptable, so we need to fix that going forward.
Um, I would also, if possible, like, um, a, a, a legal opinion on, um, redacted, not redacted, what personnel, I mean, I, you know, there's a lot of information in some of those minutes, and I know some stuff has been satisfied, has been cleared, so to speak off the, you know, um, but, um, a, an explanation of what can and-
Yeah, I have that for you, and I can give that, too.
Okay. Even if you just send it via email?
Sure.
That would be great, because some of the stuff I know has been, you know, but some of the stuff that's employee-related.
Yep.
You know, I definitely wanna know the rules, for sure, from the legal folks. I've read the law myself, but I just wanna be sure that I have that second opinion before, you know, we release something that we shouldn't be, so. Um, okay. Uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.